The sisterly relationships the City of Angels maintains with cities around the world. There's no arguing that Los Angeles is a city of diversity and its loudest cheerleader, L.A. City Councilmember Tom Labonge, is quick to show off that diversity in several different languages.
Habagahu Maga. Good morgen. Good morgen, alright. Buongiorno. Buenos dias. Bu... Buongiorno!
Labonge, Chairman of Los Angeles Sister Cities Incorporated, is unveiling a new signpost that will welcome the world to the Los Angeles Convention Center for years to come. And just like the one across from L.A. City Hall, this new sign, located outside the L.A. Convention Center at 1201 South Figueroa Street, showcases the city's relationship with 24 other cities throughout the world: cities like Beirut, Lebanon; Elliott, Israel; Ischia, Italy; and split Croatia.
And someone will walk right down this courtyard here, and they'll look up there and they'll say, "I want to go to Bordeaux. I want to go to Nagoya. I want to go to Mumbai. I want to go to St. Petersburg. I want to go somewhere." And I think that's the beauty of travel and the experience of life.
And for that reason, the signpost was unveiled to coincide with the 14th Annual Los Angeles Times Travel Show at the Convention Center, which took place the last weekend in January. Council generals and staff from the Consulate General of Los Angeles's 24 official sister cities were on hand for the unveiling.
We're very encouraged about the future, about creating more business relationships between our sister city, all of our sister cities, and the city of Los Angeles.
But at the heart of it, Labonge says the Sister Cities program is not just about travel or business relationships.
It's the People of People program. And that's what's so important: people of people.
And while the people gathered for the celebration represent an impressive two dozen cities spanning the globe, there's always room for more. President Dwight D. Eisenhower created the Sister Cities program in 1956 to build global cooperation, stimulate economic development, and promote cultural understanding. For more information on the program, go to sister-cities.org. And one city famous the world over is, of course, Hollywood. And as the glamour capital of the world, it was only fitting that the red carpet was rolled out for Hollywood's 125th birthday celebration. Yana K has more.
Happy Birthday to you!
Complete with a cake and candles, it was a birthday celebration fit for a star.
Hollywood's 125 years old. Hollywood's everybody's dream and hope. Hollywood has been so much to so many, and it's in its second golden age.
Hollywood celebrities, L.A. City officials, and community members came out to Hollywood and Highland for the red carpet celebration of Hollywood's 125th birthday, including comedian Jimmy Kimmel, who does his show in the heart of Hollywood.
For me, especially because this is my neighborhood, and, you know, when you think about 125 years, there aren't too many things in this country that are 125 years old. I think we have Larry King, and that's about it.
On display were items from Hollywood's golden era: an Emmy Award, shots of Marilyn Monroe, and other memorabilia. Now, various historical photos from Hollywood were also on display. Now, take a look at this. This is a picture of Grauman's Egyptian Theater back in 1920. These old Hollywood photographs represent the transformation of Hollywood throughout the years, and officials say the area will continue to thrive and prosper as more businesses and residents move to Hollywood.
While we're celebrating 125th birthday, we're also celebrating, to me, Hollywood's second golden age, which we have emerged into because of the comeback of this area, the work the city has done with the business community and the residents to make a community we're proud of again.
Officials say they're working hard to make sure Hollywood remains the creative capital of the world. I'm Yana K for L.A. this week. The birthday celebration was sponsored by Hollywood's Chamber of Commerce. Tourists may be lured to our region by the glitz and glamour of Hollywood, but L.A. city leaders are hoping that visitors will also discover the arts when they come to L.A. Gil Reyes tells us about a new program that aims to capitalize on a record year for L.A. tourism.
An invitation from Hunter, the Tyrannosaurus Rex, to visit him and his pals at the Natural History Museum of L.A. County. It's one of several museums offering special discounts over the next three months.
Discover your own city. Use this as your opportunity to go and experience that cultural institution, that art gallery, that performance hall that you haven't been to yet.
The program's called Discover the Arts. It's an outgrowth of January's L.A. Arts Month. It's offering two-for-one admission rates at venues like the Grammy Museum, also the Peterson Automotive, Vende, and Hollywood Museums. The goal is to boost interest in those learning institutions dedicated to science, culture, and creativity in Los Angeles.
It's in the words of its writers and the stanzas of its poets, you can hear the spirit in the rhythms and the melodies of its singers and musicians.
L.A.'s own Grammy-winning hip-hop hero Ozo Motley showed up to support Discover the Arts, holding the spree outdoor performance at Disney Concert Hall. Last year, Los Angeles experienced a record year for tourism: 27 million visitors, according to the Los Angeles Convention and Visitors Bureau. City leaders hope the museum discounts help to break another record in 2012.
We're sending a message out to the rest of the country and to the rest of the world: Come to Los Angeles. Be part of the next new thing. Come here and experience the full richness of all of the cultures that come together here in Los Angeles. Make this your destination.
Discover the Arts L.A. and the discounts offered will last till April 30th, so come check it out. Outside Disney Concert Hall, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
For principal coupons slashing up to 50% off admission, simply visit this website: that's discoverlos angeles.com/thearts. All participating museums and their discounts are listed. Another part of the city that aspires to be a tourist destination is a historic part of downtown Los Angeles that's been undergoing a rejuvenation over the last decade. Cindy San Luis introduces us to Broadway Boulevard's newest resident and the glitz and glamour she's bringing to the historic core.
One of historic Broadway theater districts' diamonds in the rough will soon shine again as world-renowned jewelry designer Tarina Tarantino brings her talents to Broadway with her upcoming Sparkle Factory.
We would look at this building every day and say, "Wouldn't that be the cutest building for us?" I mean, look at, look up at the top of the facade. It almost has a tiara at the top. It's just meant to be.
This 23,800-square-foot historic building was built in 1914 and is now undergoing a transformation to become a Sparkle Factory. This multi-use space has an innovative retail concept, including a Tarina Tarantino jewelry boutique, design headquarters, and production studio.
We have been huge fans of downtown L.A., and we've always dreamt of really having our headquarters here in downtown.
The boutique, to be located in the old LL Bean Western Costume Design Building, will offer limited edition, for Broadway-only merchandise, making this flagship location truly unique from its Melrose Avenue, New York City, and Milan sister shops.
To be able to not only continue to make our products in Los Angeles, but to make them in our very own factory right here on Broadway is extremely exciting.
The opening of the Sparkle Factory is just one part of the Bringing Back Broadway initiative, which began four years ago, and has been changing the facade of one of the city's most famous streets ever since.
Economically, 500,000 people drive to downtown each and every day to come to work. So we see the importance of downtown, and with this addition, we're going to see Broadway really, really take off.
The Sparkle Factory sits appropriately at the intersection of the Fashion District and the Historic Theater District on the corner of Broadway and Ninth. Once fully leased, the building will be able to sustain over 90 additional creative industry jobs.
So many amazing things have happened here. It's got such an incredible energy, so we're really, really excited about the possibilities of what it will become.
Tarantino plans to open doors to the public by early fall of this year. From the LL Bean Western Costume Design Building in downtown Los Angeles, I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. this week.
Tarina Tarantino is famous for jewelry featuring sparkling Swarovski crystals and lucite. She has collaborated with brands the likes of Paul Mitchell, Hello Kitty, Barbie, and Wizard of Oz. A new council member is sworn in: a health clinic that caters just to women and free trees for Angelenos. These stories and more in City Beat.
I, Joe Buscaino...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Joe Buscaino, the city's newest council member, was sworn in by the Los Angeles City Clerk and City Council last week. Buscaino's family members were in council chambers for the swearing and ceremony. Buscaino beat out Warren Furutani in January's special runoff election for the city's council District 15 seat, left vacant by now Congresswoman Janice Hahn. District 15 covers the Harbor area and includes the communities of San Pedro, Wilmington, and Watts. The U.S. Labor Department is looking into payments over several years totaling $1 million, allegedly approved by members of the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum Commission, that were delivered in cash to someone with the union representing stagehands working at events held at the Coliseum. This according to the L.A. Times. Los Angeles City Controller Wendy Gruel announced in July that she was beginning the city's first top-to-bottom audit of the publicly-owned venue. California Hospital Medical Center celebrated the grand opening of its Los Angeles Center for Women's Health with the reception and tour that was opened to the public. The 16,000-square-foot facility will offer screening, diagnosis, and treatment of female cancers, heart disease, and other health issues faced by women.
As we see the needs of the community change, we evolve. We evolve and we grow so that we can start to provide those services to this community.
The center is located downtown at 1513 South Grant Avenue. The L.A. Conservation Corps gave away shade trees on a recent weekend to anyone interested who lives in the city of Los Angeles.
Well, I'm taking advantage of the free tree program that the city has for us today, and it's, we have a garden workday tomorrow, so it just coincides that we'll be planting this tree at our new community garden in Alision Valley.
They have found out that there's less trees in these areas, like South Central, East Alamo Heights. Most of them, they're highly densely populated, but we don't have too many trees in those areas.
A recent study revealed Los Angeles only has 21% tree canopy cover. That's below the national average of 27%. The Islamic Center of Reseda promotes cooperation and understanding between the Muslim community and the wider community. Councilmember Dennis Zine joined local, state, and federal officials to celebrate the grand opening of the center's new home. Here's Yana K. The opening of the center was the culmination of a seven-year effort that involved not only fundraising, but community outreach that touched the hearts of Los Angeles city and county officials.
We celebrate today what we could make out of tomorrow. We have our eyes on the future and how to make it better. And the real lesson of America is that government alone can't make a better future. It must come from the morality and civic engagement of the populace.
We must also stand in front of harm that attacks any one religion in this great nation because the faith that you have as Muslim Americans is absolutely guaranteed in the Constitution of the United States.
Councilman Zine presented the center with a proclamation from city officials noting the unifying belief that brings all Angelenos together.
And when I look at that American flag on the wall, that American flag on our wall, that's what we're here for: the red, white, and blue. Doesn't matter what your religion, doesn't matter what your skin color. What it matters is we believe in what that flag represents: liberty, freedom, and justice for all.
The Islamic Center of Reseda is a non-political, nonprofit, independent organization for adults, children, and youth. For L.A. this week, I'm Yana K. In this week's list of things to do: a Valentine's party thrown by those behind the Siklavaia cycling events, a photography exhibit featuring some famous faces, and teaching kids all about healthy living. Siklavaia is hosting a Valentine's party from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Friday, February 10th at Atwater Crossing, which is located at 3245 Casitas Avenue. Bring your Valentine or meet a new Valentine there. There will be music, speed dating, a raffle, an auction, photo booths, and much more. Admission is free, but bring money for drinks, eats, and the auction, of course. An appreciation of past volunteers, free drinks for the first 20 Siklavaia volunteers. Organizers will also be signing up new volunteers for the April 15, 2012 Siklavaia. For more information and to RSVP, go to Siklavaia's Facebook event page. And it's your last chance to catch the TV Life exhibit of photographs by John Van Hamersfeld at the Darkroom Gallery downtown. The exhibit ends on Saturday, February 11. Hamersfeld's best known for his legendary poster for the 1964 blockbuster surf film, The Endless Summer, and his album covers for the likes of The Beatles, The Rolling Stones, and The Grateful Dead. His TV Life photo exhibit brings together a collection covering an important 15-year period of his life, starting from the mid-'70s, of his Los Angeles experiences, including photographs taken of some of his famous friends, as well as a selection of his iconic posters and graphic artwork. The Darkroom Gallery is located at 727 South Spring Street. More info can be found by calling 323-271-5635. And if you've got young kids at home and you're looking for some free family fun, head on over to the Japanese-American National Museum at 100 North Central Avenue in Little Tokyo for the Target-sponsored Free Family Saturday event from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on February 11. February's theme is healthy living. Different workshops throughout the day teach healthy recipes that kids can also help make, like delicious miso soup or kebabs. There's even an origami class and a traditional Japanese bonodori dance class. Admission is free all day, including access to the museum's exhibitions. Call 213-625-0414 for detailed information. And remember, you can find this information on our Facebook page, and that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Residents lined the streets of Chinatown for the 113th Annual Golden Dragon Parade that helps usher in the Year of the Dragon, the most fortuitous sign of the Chinese zodiac. If you need a second chance to start the new year afresh, you've got it. Chinese New Year, based on the lunar calendar, fell this year on January 23rd. The annual parade through L.A.'s Chinatown was celebrated that following weekend with the help of local dignitaries that included L.A. City Councilmember Jan Perry and L.A. County Supervisor Zev Yaroslavsky.
Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
This is a great tradition in Los Angeles, not only for the Chinese-American community, but for all Angelenos to celebrate the Chinese New Year in Chinatown, one of the great neighborhoods and great communities of America.
Paradegoer May Razkowski, speaking in Mandarin, her native tongue, wished everyone happiness in the coming spring. And new clothes are in order to usher in a new year of prosperity, and that goes for the little ones as well. And there's no better color than red to signal prosperity and good fortune.
Happy New Year! Happy New Year! This is a really good place to be. We wish you a happy New Year!
Paradegoers could be seen holding traditional paper umbrellas and donning traditional cone field hats of farmers to shield them from the California sun as they take in dragon dancers, martial arts performances, the Miss Chinatown float, and much more.
So many people came out this year because of the beautiful weather. What better thing than we can do than celebrate the diversity, Chinese New Year, and this great weather that we have in the city of L.A.? Happy New Year, everyone! Gongge Fat Choy!
May the Year of the Dragon bring your family and our great city prosperity and good luck. Serving as the parade grand marshal was Lisa C., author of the popular novels Snow Flower and the Secret Fan and Shanghai Girls. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow us on Facebook for stories you might have missed. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Parents, distinguished faculty, mom, dad. Today's lesson: How to exercise with your kids and save the planet. First, you must believe, being that your children really are the future. Second, you must do. Instead of jumping in the car, let's go for a walk, or a run, or even a bike ride. No pollution, no oil, no gas. And as long as you obey ultra-safe rules, we're cool. Lastly, you have to live. Live into our big, beautiful, healthy future. Be, do, live. Watch the road.
If you care about changes in your neighborhood, let your voice be heard.
And yet today, our community has council district lines that politically divide us.
I argue that the status quo is unacceptable.
Every 10 years, the boundaries of the city council districts must be redrawn. This process is called redistricting. The commission needs your input on a new redistricting plan. Join us at our next meeting and help us serve you.
Redistricting. Everybody, come.
G'day. Troy McCavan from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Well, welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 10 a.m. All of our meetings are open to the public, so you're welcome to come. State what's on your mind, or just listen to your city government in work. My name is Herb Wesson, and I am the president of the Los Angeles City Council. We do have a quorum. Why don't we begin with calling the roll? Madam Clerk?
Alecon, Buscayeno, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Wezar, Corretz, Gracori, Labanz, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendall, Zine, Weston, Timmer is present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Reyes, seconds. Next?
Communitar resolutions for approval.
Mr. Buscayeno moves. Mr. Corretz, seconds. We should quickly, at this point, we're going to run through the agenda, and then I will recognize Mr. Alecon for a presentation. So let's go through our first set of items.
Items one through three are items known for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that item two may be received and filed in as much as a lien has been paid.
Okay, without objection. Now let's open and close the... In fact, any cards?
No cards.
Specials members? We... So there are no... Are there cards?
No cards.
Okay. All right, so then let's open and close the public hearing on the remaining balance. If it's time to vote, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And the ordinance will be held over for one week, Mr. President.
Okay, Ms. Perry, I see.
I'll wait till I was going to call five specials.
Okay. Let's go through the next set of agenda items.
Items four and five are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials members? Mr. Reyes, item... Mr. Reyes, item five. Any other specials? Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next?
And the ordinance, Mr. President, will be held over for one week.
Until we have 12 members, yes. Next?
Items six and seven are items for which public hearings have not been held. Temples require for consideration.
Okay, without objection. Those items are now before us. Okay, we have a card on item six. Any other cards?
No cards, no other cards.
Specials members? So let's open and close the public hearing on the remaining balance. That brings us to a vote. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Items eight through 10 are closed session items. Do you wish to hold these on the desk?
At this point, we will hold those items. Mr. Reyes?
Council Wezar would like to reconsider item three. He's not here, but he'd like to hold item three special. Can we consider that?
Okay, so on item three, can we vote for reconsideration? So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All righty. So that brings us to... Where at on the agenda?
Presentations or general public comment?
Are there any public comment cards?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Alecon for a presentation.
Councilmembers, as you know, this weekend, we are very pleased to host the Grammys. But one thing that doesn't get publicized enough is the work that the Grammy Foundation does to help us in our communities. So today, I'm pleased to recognize the National Institute on Drug Abuse, the Grammy Foundation, and Music Cares for their collaboration on teen substance abuse awareness through music contests during the National Drug Facts Week. I'll also be recognizing the first-place winner, who comes out of my district, and I'm very excited about that because this is a national contest, and the winner comes out of Phoenix House Academy in the Lakeview Terrace area. So we are very fortunate to have the winner right out of Los Angeles, and I am very fortunate that the winner comes out of my district. National Drug Facts Week has become the premier national observance, helping teens shatter the myths about drugs. In community and school events all over America, teens and experts come together during National Drug Facts Week for an honest conversation about how drugs affect the brain, body, and behavior. About a third of high school seniors report using an illicit drug sometime in the past year, and more than 10% report non-medical use of narcotic painkillers, and more than 20% of high school seniors report smoking marijuana in the past month. Even for those teens who do not abuse drugs, many have friends and family who do, and they are often looking for ways to help them. When teens are given the scientific facts about drugs, they can better... They can be better prepared to make good decisions for themselves, and they can share the facts with others. To observe the National Drug Facts Week, NIDA, the National Institute on Drug Abuse, has many federal, state, and local partners working together to get the facts about drugs to teens and communities all over America. NIDA has a special collaboration with the Grammy Foundation and Music Cares, two charitable arms of the Recording Academy that created and sponsors the annual Teen Substance Abuse Awareness Through Music Contest. So it's very much my pleasure to introduce Amanda Ram, who's a resident at Phoenix House Academy in Los Angeles. She is our first-place winner. Amanda, please. The second-place winner, by the way, is Kevin Simmons. He's a resident of Healing Lodge of Seven Nations in Spokane Valley, Washington. And Grant Davis is the third-place winner, a student at Silver State High School in Carson City, Nevada. As you can see, this is a national contest. So after leaving the chambers today, all three winners will be attending the 54th Annual Grammy Awards Backstage Experience at Staples Center, and we'll get a special tour to give them a view of professional artists rehearsing for the Grammy Awards on Sunday. It sounds pretty cool. It's a great... It's going to be a great experience for them. So obviously, as a city, we need to continue to promote the true facts about drug use and abuse. We need to be courageous to help those who have chosen to forge a path toward recovery from addiction, and we need to continue to realize the arts have a healing experience for the artist and the audience. Today, we are very pleased to be joined by the Director of the Office of Science Policy and Communications for NIDA, the National Institute of Drug Abuse, at the National Institute of Health in Bethesda, Maryland, Dr. Susan Weiss. NIDA was established in 1974 and is the lead federal agency for conducting basic clinical and epidemiological research to improve the understanding, treatment, and prevention of drug abuse and addiction and health consequences of those behaviors. Recognized today for bringing the power of science to bear on drug use and addiction through the creation of the National Drug Facts Week, that has become a premier health observance week in our country. So we want to thank NIDA for their work, their continued work, and particularly for their participation in this special program. With that, I'd like to present this certificate to Dr. Susan Weiss.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here today and to be recognized by the City of Los Angeles for this event. Most of our work really centers on supporting research, but we recognize that research in a vacuum is not going to be very helpful to the people that it needs to help, and so we do a lot to try and make treatment providers and community people who are involved in prevention, and teachers, and parents, and clinicians aware of the findings of our research. But one of our most important audiences are youth, because we know that that's when drug abuse generally starts and can take hold. So this contest has been very special to us as a part of National Drug Facts Week, and we're very grateful to our partners in this, and particularly to the youth who have submitted really wonderful musical entries that are very powerful and that we hope will be able to inspire their peers. We also applaud them for tackling really the most... One of the most difficult of problems and succeeding in getting both their life and their dreams back. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
The Grammy Foundation and Music Cares are also to be commended for the tremendous work they do. Many of us know the work of the Grammy Foundation and less about the amazing work of Music Cares. Music Cares provides a safety net of critical assistance for music people in times of need. Music Cares also focuses the resources and attention of the music industry on human service issues that directly impact the health and welfare of the music community. Music Cares MAP Fund provides financial and supportive assistance for music people in need of addiction recovery services. So recognized today for their work in creating and sponsoring the Teen Substance Abuse Awareness Through Music Contest during National Drug Facts Week, that uses music to help young people spread the message about the importance of healthy choices and the dangers of drug abuse. Phoenix, we have Music Cares and the Grammy Foundation certificates for them as well. So I'd like to present, representing Music Cares, Erica Cruzen and Harold Owens, the both senior directors of Music Cares.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. As Senior Director of Music Cares and on behalf of both the Grammy Foundation and Music Cares, Harold and I are honored to thank the City Council for recognizing the efforts made by our foundations in helping NIDA to dispel some of the myths about drug abuse and promote healthy, creative living. Working with NIDA, truly the pioneers of addiction research, is a privilege as their dedication and commitment to community service, scientific leadership, and public education is not only helping to shape the way we look at and treat addiction, but how we continue to help those in need. This annual contest utilizes both the music education and addiction recovery missions of the Grammy Foundation and Music Cares to teens across America. Our hope is that these teens will find knowledge, compassion, and healing while they tell their stories of addiction through the sound of music. And lastly, I would just like to say that today's recognition is a valuable gift to Amanda Ram of the Phoenix House and her progress in treatment. I encourage you, Amanda, to believe in your talent and see that others here in this room believe in you too. The Phoenix House has provided a recovery tool for the young men and women there to find peace within and rise from their pain and suffering, and just like your song, "Even With A Broken Wing." Thank you.
We also have a certificate for the Grammy Foundation, but at this time, I'd like to... I'd like to introduce the winner of the contest, Amanda Ram. And I believe we have the music ready to run, so if we could play the music right now. That was great. We had the president's head bobbing up there. We... Before Amanda says something, I'd like to have Phoenix House step forward. Very special place in our world and in the city of Los Angeles. I remember when Phoenix House came into the community, it was a very tough challenge. It was a tremendous debate, and it was... It took a couple of years before Phoenix House settled into the community and started becoming part of the community. But they are providing services to people all over the region, not just my district. And so we owe an incredible debt of gratitude to Phoenix House. And what I'd like to do is introduce the music director, John Morabito, and Wanda Nelson, the senior counselor. But in doing so, I also want to present Phoenix House with a check for $1,000 for their music program, because if they can produce that kind of music, I know that they can heal the tremendous challenges that are facing these kids that are in their residency. So with that, I present this check on behalf of the City of Los Angeles to John Morabito, and thank you so much. He's the music director, so I know you had something to do with this.
Thank you.
But thank you so much, and continued success.
Good morning. I'm Wanda Nelson. I'm the senior counselor on the girls' unit at Phoenix House. Phoenix House Lakeview Terrace is a residential substance abuse rehab facility that treats at-risk teens between the ages of 14 and 18. We help them overcome their problems associated with drug abuse and lead them to a healthy, productive life. We are committed to protecting and supporting individuals, families, and communities affected by substance abuse. Our residentials... Our residents... I'm sorry. Our residents live. They go to school there, they engage in treatment, and they also work in the community and do community service. It's a 90-day-to-six-month program. We recognize that substance abuse is a long-term disease for these kids, and that we help their families, and we also collaborate with the surrounding areas to help partner in the community so that we can provide them with community support once they leave our facility. We have many things that we provide there. We have health services, mentoring, fitness classes, writing, music, and much more. We welcome you at any time to come visit our facility, and thank you very much for recognizing us today.
Good morning. My name is John Morabito. I'm the music director at Phoenix House, and I've been engineering for years, and I'm really committed to working with the youth at Phoenix House. Kerry DiAguarde from American Idol has donated a recording studio that has been built at Phoenix House, and we use the studio as music therapy for the kids. We allow them to have a voice, to rap, sing, play instruments, to do whatever they feel, and it really is helping these kids. And so thank you so much for this gracious gift, and we'll continue to be making music. Thank you.
Of course, we do have a certificate for Phoenix House as well, and, as I mentioned, the Grammy Foundation. But right now, I want to present Amanda. What an amazing talent, and somebody who understands that music isn't just about feeling good, it's about healing, and her music expresses that. So with that, it's my pleasure to introduce Amanda Ram from Phoenix House Academy.
Thank you for this opportunity. This is crazy. I've been at Phoenix House for about six months, and it's helped me in ways that I never thought would be possible. I'm truly a changed person, and the music program there, like, it's amazing, and music's my passion, and I think one of the big reasons I was able to recover and get in recovery is because of music. It helps me express myself in a positive way, and wow. I just want to say thank you so much, and this is truly a dream come true. So look for me in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your patience. This is an extended version, but this... Let's not forget that this is a message about... about addiction that can affect everyone, especially during these stressful economic times. So we continue to advocate that treatment works and celebrate that recovery happens. So congratulations to Amanda, congratulations to all these organizations for the tremendous they do, tremendous work they do day in and day out. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon, I have two members on the queue, starting with Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to rise and congratulate all the participants for your devotion to our youth and the notion of healing, what that can do to the human spirit. We're listening to it, and congratulations, Amanda, for all you've done. Colleagues, I remember in the early 90s, when then, then Councilmember Alarcon first brought forth Phoenix House as a facility in the district. And at that time, this room was filled, the pros on that side, the cons on that side, and it was very intense. It was amazing to see the rookie, Alarcon, as a council member, beginning his course of action as a council member and actually putting a lot on the line to make sure Phoenix was going to exist. All the land use issues, all the social issues, all the NIMBY issues came out, and Richard stood strong. And now to see this happen almost 20 years later, in this context, with this great moment to celebrate a young life that is recovering, and to see the smiles and the pride of all the participants. These are the rewards, I would hope, those who would fight these kinds of facilities would understand that we're trying to do with human beings who just want to live. And for that, I thank you, Richard, because you stood strong, and now we have this to celebrate. Congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Busciano.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I want to acknowledge my colleague, Mr. Alarcon, for acknowledging the Phoenix House and the great work that they do. And I can, I can clearly say, as a senior lead author, I've dealt with kids who have turned to drugs, and I've seen the despicable choices it has put on these, these young people. So I want to rise and acknowledge the Phoenix House and the work that you do. And Amanda, you are an inspiration to all of us, not only the us, we adults, but also the young people in our city. Continue what you're doing. Sing out loud and share your story. We appreciate you, we thank you, and dream big. You're going to go to great places. So thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Congratulations.
Mr. Labange.
Always, Richard, you do it, you touch all the bases. I second what Joe said, Amanda, that's wonderful. This morning, I couldn't sleep, so I watched a very poignant documentary on Kurt Flood. And Kurt had a problem of alcohol, and he went and got substance abuse, finally got his life right, but God took him too soon. But it was a tremendous, tremendous story. But those who reach out to help other people, to help them rise again, that's a special thing, and Phoenix is such a special name. But also Grammy Gives Back, is that right? Do I say that right? Grammy Gives Back, and we're very proud of what they do in Los Angeles. The museum and the children and all ages come in, and it's just special. So you've got a great bunch of people there, and great, you honor them on this day, Mr. Alarcon.
All right, Richard.
Mr. President, I, I am a Catholic, and I must confess that I was actually with the NIMBYs when Phoenix House came in. I was very skeptical, but we worked to place conditions that, that could make it a better operation. We went back and revamped those conditions two years later, and, and since it has become an anchor in the community, it is part of the community, and they are very welcomed in, in Lakeview Terrace for the tremendous work they do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Madam Clerk, I think we can do some additional business right now. It's my understanding, maybe I can ask our Budget Chair, Paul, Paul Krikorian. Mr. Krikorian, where it relates to items eight through 10, do you have recommendations for us?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Numbers eight and nine can be dealt with in open session. These were discussed in committee, and there was no real controversy. Number 10 should be discussed in closed session.
Thank you. So with that said, per the recommendation of our Budget and Finance Chair, why don't we, on item eight, open the roll?
Excuse me, Mr. President. For item number eight, the Budget and Finance Committee recommendation is to effectuate a settlement in the case entitled Justin Maron Gonzalez versus the City of Los Angeles in the amount of $250,000.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, if you could read item nine.
I'm going to pitch in here. The City Attorney's recommendation is to reject the settlement offer, and the Budget and Finance recommendation is to adopt the City Attorney's recommendation.
Okay, on that item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, before I do my presentation, which, which is the next one, I'd like to ask for Michael Carrion and Carlos Mottaquin to come forward for public comment, if you could come forward quickly. Michael, good to see you.
Good to see you. Once again, I'm at the end of my wits with my council member. He's not here today, but maybe I can address the council. We are getting ready to ask Mr. Weezer to step out of office. I've called Mr. Weezer. He's failed to return my calls. I spoke to his office. They said he would call on Monday at 5:15. As of today, I haven't heard from him. Called.
Michael, I'm going to have him talk to you when you finish the rest of your public comment.
This is public comment, I want to use.
No, I said when you finish it, I'm going to have him come speak with you.
Okay.
And address us as a full body.
I've addressed this.
No, just us.
I've addressed this with Mr. Weezer's office over and over about the lack of communication with his office and El Serrano. All we're asking for is to be treated like Bring Back Broadway. He has one person, Wellington, someone, Jessica Wellington, to go with people to City Hall, to the City Department, to adjust everything. When people, members from Boyle Heights want something, they get what they want. From El Serrano, constituents call, they don't even get returned calls. I am an activist. I called Arturo three weeks ago. You know when he calls me? When they see me walking in here. That's when my phone starts to ring at 10 o'clock on a, on a, on a council member, on a council day. I don't play that game no more. I'm tired. Either you start getting rid of your staff, or we start getting rid of you. This game of cat and mouse and not returning calls irritates me. And if you don't return my calls, then I will be here every time. I will be at every Bring Back Broadway meeting, and I will vote against everything that you have to vote against that has to do with the Broadway downtown quarter. You're on Facebook, people are whining, complaining about it. I'm not the only one.
Thank you, Michael. Carlos, Mr. Weezer.
Mr. Carrion, it's unfortunate that I have to address you through public comment, because this is apparently the only means of communication that you would like to have. My office does return your calls, and when my office does return your calls, you yell at my staff, you hang up on them, and I told my staff, if anybody talks to them that way, there's no need to continue that communication. So if you want to treat my staff appropriately and in a proper, professional manner, we will continue to return your calls. And we see you at committee meetings, we see you in the highways. You do not want to speak to us at that time, but you do want to come here and public comment and make your comment every time. This is what you would like to do, and you have that. Unfortunately, if you want to continue communicating through public comment, I will continue to do that. I'm always available, and you know I always return your calls, Mr. Carrion. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, Mr. Weezer. Michael, 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 you're disrupting the meeting now. Carlos Mottaquin, please come forward, sir. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, everyone, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today. I represent myself. I'm a member of Occupy LA. I'm a homeowner's advocate, and I want to give you a report of what happened last Monday. We met with officials from Wells Fargo Bank, six executives. They presented their, their numbers, their new programs that they have, and we presented them with the facts of how homeowners continue to be victimized by the thousands. Immediately after the meeting, we had a press conference, and I was interviewed by one of the smallest Spanish TV stations here in Southern California. And this is the result of some of the phone calls. I have literally about 300 phone calls from homeowners that are hurting, that have, that continue to be ignored, and I'm here to, to say to you that we can no longer continue to ignore this. We have a huge problem. Yesterday, as you know, Carmela Harris did went along with the settlement, which in itself is a fraudulent settlement. Homeowners would only get $2,000, $2,000 when they have lost their homes. It is immoral, it is criminal.
All right. Few more cards here. We have Cheryl Ickley. Councilwoman Weston, our president, for her presentation.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President and members. There we are. Today is Pet Adoption Friday. I have with me a poodle mix that goes by the name of Coco. She's three years old and will be ready for pickup tomorrow. She can be adopted today and ready for pickup tomorrow. She's had her shots. She has one more minor thing that has to happen, and they're going to do that when she returns from this building. But here in the city of Los Angeles, we've been doing this program for six years, and we have a 100% adoption record. We definitely would like to keep it. This is a beautiful, I mean, it's a miniature of my dog Charlie that I adopted from us. And if I thought I could sneak it home, I would definitely do so. Now, I was informed a little earlier that quite possibly one of our airport police officers might have an, an interest in adopting our pet of the day. Well, officer, here's our pet of the day, and I'm going to afford you the opportunity to have first dibs. Come on, you know you want it. Officer Nettles says she's still deciding. Well, officer, we're going to make it real hard on you for two reasons. Number one, this dog, the only reason why we have this dog is because the family had to move to an apartment. They were brokenhearted when they surrendered their companion animal. And that story enough should be compelling to make you want to take her home. But the second thing I'm going to do is I'm going to allow you to hold her until your presentation. So you are in charge, you are in charge of Coco. So everybody that's watching this, keep your fingers crossed that Officer Nettles adopts the dog. If not, come on down yourselves and please give this dog a home. Every time you adopt a dog, you save a life. We provide animals to people all over the city, but we just can't do it all. We can't do it alone. We need your help. So I hope Officer Nettles does it, but somebody, please come and save Coco's life. And I'm going to leave you to talk her into taking Coco. She would be, she could go on patrol with you. Anyway, Mr. President, thank you. Let's keep our fingers crossed that we keep our 100% adoption rate moving forward. Thank you.
I think our best have one of the strongest advocates and our president, Councilwoman Weston. Let's see if she can resist.
Okay, great, thank you. It is my distinct pleasure to welcome to council today representatives from the American Heart Association, who have come today to raise awareness about the risks of heart disease to all people and especially women. I know a number of us are wearing red today to raise awareness to the efforts of the American Heart Association to reach out to people and particularly women. Cardiovascular disease is the nation's leading cause of death, and with each passing year strains our healthcare system to the tune of $297 billion indirect and indirect costs. In addition, heart disease claims the lives of one in three women every year and nearly 2,200 Americans each day, an average of one person every 39 seconds. While one in 30 American women dies from breast cancer every year, one in three dies from cardiovascular disease. It is because of these startling facts that the American Heart Association has made a commitment to raising awareness about heart disease and educating women on how they can fight back. Go Red for Women is the American Heart Association's national call to increase awareness and inspire women to take control of their heart health. National Wear Red Day kicks off American Heart Month the first Friday of February and encourages people to wear the color red to raise awareness of the dangers of heart disease and to help raise funds to support lifesaving educational programs and new treatments to fight heart disease. Preventative strategies that are community-based and have to be, and, and serve to be deterrents to heart disease. These strategies that are used encourage people to engage in very healthy lifestyle choices, such as choosing proper nutrition, taking part in physical activity and exercise. So I'm very happy to have the American Heart Association here today to kick off American Heart Month and to celebrate National Wear Red Day in the city of Los Angeles. And now, I would like to introduce Dr. Frank Pratt, Medical Director of the Los Angeles County, is it?
Fire Department.
Fire Department, okay. The Los Angeles County Fire Department, to come up and say a few words. Dr. Pratt.
Good morning, thank you. Wish to thank Councilmember Perry and this honorable counsel for this proclamation this morning. The American Heart Association truly appreciates our collaborative work with this council, with all Angelenos. I'm an Angelino for all my years except for two, and I've watched this city grow, and I've seen it change, and I've seen the relationships between the Heart Association, the medical community, and this council grow stronger and stronger. The Heart Association, as its current president-elect, truly, truly appreciates this collaboration. As the council member said, one-third of Americans die from cardiovascular disease. More Americans die from cardiovascular disease and stroke than all cancers combined. We're not mainstream on the radar screen like many other medical problems, but we know that emphasis on prevention and treatment will save many Angelenos' lives. Again, thank you to this honorable council, to the council member, for your recognition and for your support. Much appreciated.
Thank, thank you very much, Dr. Pratt. And then your Gabriela. Okay, Gabriela. I would also like to recognize Gabriela Tessier, who is a, an anchor woman from Univision and a meteorologist, and also a member of the American Heart Association Board of Directors. And I would also like to recognize Nicole Jones, who is also here, a member of the Board of Directors. Would you two like to say a few words?
Gracias, Consejal Perry. Miembros del consejo, señor presidente, gracias. Mi nombre es Gabriela Tessier y soy miembro de la junta directiva de la Asociación Americana del Corazón. En nombre de nuestra junta directiva y de todos los latinos de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, gracias por instituir el mes de febrero como el mes del corazón y por su compromiso en salvar vidas y alcanzar a la comunidad de habla hispana. Como mujer latina, les digo que este reconocimiento es especialmente importante, considerando que solo una de cada tres mujeres latinas sabe que es mucho más probable que muera de un ataque al corazón que de cualquier tipo de cáncer. Sepan que la Asociación Americana del Corazón no escatima en esfuerzos para llegar a comunidades menos privilegiadas llevando. menos privilegiadas llevando un mensaje claro y sencillo: Los latinos somos especialmente susceptibles a las enfermedades cardiovasculares por dos cosas: nos gusta comer rico y la genética no nos ayuda en ese departamento. Así es que con la proclamación tenemos un estandarte más en nuestra lucha contra las enfermedades cardiovasculares. Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council. I'd like to say just thank you. I'm here, I'm very happy to be here with my board members to thank you for celebrating Heart Health Month. And just to remind you, I'm wearing my seven pin, Life Simple Seven, things that you can remember, seven things: get active, stop smoking, maintain a healthy weight, eat better, and then know your three numbers: blood pressure, blood sugar, as well as your cholesterol. So again, we're very thankful to be here and we thank you for this acknowledgement.
Thank you. That's really good. Thank you very much.
Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes and then Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a few words.
Councilman Perry, I just want to take a moment and thank you for bringing this important organization into the spotlight. Gabriela, thank you for your words. As she stated, due to our rich diet, due to some of our habits and how we conduct ourselves with the need for more recreation, more exercise, the Spanish-speaking community tends to be a little more susceptible to heart diseases. Indeed, people of color are suffering from diabetes, obesity, which impacts our heart condition. So I want to thank all of you for your presence. And Gabriela, she is one of the anchors in Channel 34 in the morning. Throughout the morning, she is connecting with the community, speaking about health issues, issues that make us think about a better quality of life. So I want to thank you, Gabriela, for that moment, given the challenges we have in front of us and for all of you who are taking this step to make sure that we are that much more informed about how we take care of ourselves. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Obviously, I take this very personal. I've been involved first in the TV world where I did a lot of honoring of folks from the heart disease, and they honored me as well for one year when it was compelling to me that women's diagnosis and symptoms are different. And many times, they don't get that same support. That's changed dramatically in the last five years, for sure. And I'm very grateful to see that women get the same kinds of analysis that are different than men's because we are different in that sense. So that's number one. Number two, I personally, of course, have heart disease and it's been part of my reality as well as diabetes. And I was fortunate to have a Watchman device put in my heart by a Dr. Doshi over at St. John's. So there are technologies coming out, there's new medicines coming out. I'm a big anti-Cumadin guy because they had me on heavy doses of it, and frankly, I don't appreciate that. So we're moving in the right direction, but we have to acknowledge that heart disease, as Ms. Perry said, is one of the number one, or third cause, whatever. It's right at the top of how people pass. And so whatever we can do to educate people, whatever we can do to support, that's what we're all about. And I want to thank you, Ms. Perry, for bringing everybody together for this. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I will be brief, and this is the first year, I forgot my red tie, so my apologies, but thank you, Ms. Perry, for doing this and making sure every single year I will go upstairs and find a red tie shortly. But I want to thank everybody who's up here, Ms. Perry especially, and the entire Heart Association. This morning, I started at Belmont High School, and UCLA Nursing School is doing a 10-year study with the National Institute of Health on childhood obesity and childhood health, looking at 25 schools, what we can do to get people moving and get them healthy about their hearts, avoid diabetes. We had an event that about four or five of us were in last night at the Tom Bradley Tower with a bunch of nurses who said, just on the diabetes front, that America now looks at a statistic in which one-third of Americans in the next 10 years, 100 million people, will be susceptible to diabetes. And I think that goes hand in hand with the same behavior that we see for the healthiness or unhealthiness of our hearts. So Gabriela and to our president-elect, to everybody who's making sure that this message gets out there, thank you. These kids today, we had a group of cheerleaders, some of them who are more fit than others, and all of them made the commitment today to start early in their lives. And when they can do that, whether it's getting up early like Mr. Labange does, walking up to Mount Hollywood every morning, or others, we make sure that we invest in ourselves and in a healthy community. So God bless you for what you do, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for bringing that presentation.
Mr. Tom Cardenas Labange.
Very nicely said, very good. I wish I was bilingual as Tony is, but I didn't wear my red tie, but I wore my international tie because it's an international problem. And the Heart Association's impact is great, and for people to be in motion is so good. I'm fortunate. I did have a checkup the other day, and I did well. My wife went with me because she wanted to make sure I wasn't not telling the truth. But I keep in motion since 1978. I walk every day in Griffin Park, every day. And it's not only good for the body, for the mind, but for the heart. Thank you all. Thank you, Jan Perry. Jan Perry, you've got a big heart.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for bringing this forward to us. And a lot has been said, but one thing that hit me, that really made me aware of the crisis we are in with respect to proper eating and good exercise, when I heard that today's generation is the first generation that perhaps may have the lower life expectancy than the previous generation. And that says a lot. It really captures all the work you're trying to do. So thank you so much for your efforts. This is probably one of the most important issues we're facing as a country, and particularly for Latinos. And, Mr. President, if you will allow me five more minutes to, so I could say what Gabriela said in Spanish and translate that, is that possible? Oh, I'm just kidding. But thank you so much for all your work, particularly for Latinos. I should have got a...
Yeah, I got you.
Particularly for Latinos, we know the higher incidence of diabetes and what we do and we eat, and also the important roles that our schools should play with our Latino population is also very, very important. So I know you've reached out to L E S D. Very important work you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Back to you, Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you and congratulations. I'm going to ask that Mr. Zein begin to make his way to the podium. And I think, Mr. Zein, that the airport's, airport police weighed in, and I think we're in the process of an adoption here. Is that, am I right? Okay. Everybody give Officer Nettles a round of applause. Coco has been adopted. Our 100% dog adoption rate still continues.
Well, with that, Mr. President, I guess the airport gets another K-9 officer with a K-9 unit. Thank you. Congratulations. If I could have the World Airport Police Representatives join me, along with my colleague, Bill Rosendahl, who represents Westchester, Councilmember Rosendahl. And it's appropriate that we have the airport police officers here with us following the presentation by Councilman Perry regarding the aspect on heart and saving lives and living healthy, because we are going to recognize and honor, along with the representatives from the airport and our fire chief, along with the new, and I received his card to get his title correct. It is the Executive Director for Homeland Security and Law Enforcement, R.F. Alakhan, who was formerly with the city, who went to Washington and came back home, and now is a new daddy in addition to everything else. At least you're close to home. And we're also joined by a chief from the airport police, Michael Heims, and representatives from the Los Angeles World Airport, talking about heart and saving lives. Two quick-thinking Los Angeles World Airport police officers saved the life of a woman who had a heart attack at LAX. Robert Masquera, Robert, right here. Been an officer at the airport police for four years, began his career in 2007. Prior to that, he was a detention officer with Los Angeles Police Department for five years, also a veteran of the United States Army, deployed to Iraq in 2004 and 2005, born August 9, 1975, and grew up in the great 3rd District, Woodland Hills. And then we have Ty Tran, officer with the airport police for two years, began his career in July 2009, born February 10, 1984 in Vietnam, moved to the United States in 1987, resides in Corona, California. He flies in from Corona to LAX, because it's a long, long way. United States Army for eight years, talking about living the American dream, protecting the country and now protecting the people in Los Angeles at the airport. At around 10:15, the evening of December 30, 2011, these two officers rushed to a call of a woman feeling sick in Terminal 2. When officers responded to the departure level at Terminal 2, they found 49-year-old Ethel Martinez sitting in a car parked curbside. Martinez had collapsed on the sidewalk while walking her sister to a ticket counter inside the terminal. Her husband, Aldo Martinez, helped his wife back into the car and put out a call for help. As the officers were talking to Aldo Martinez and the wife, she suddenly stopped breathing and had no pulse. Acting quickly, officers began CPR while Officer Tran ran inside the terminal and grabbed the AED, the defibrillator. And we've got one of those here with us right now, working together. The officers used the defibrillator and continued with CPR until Martinez began breathing again. Los Angeles Fire Department paramedics then arrived, quickly transported Martinez to a local hospital for further medical treatment. The quick actions of these officers have given Ethel Martinez a second chance of life in the new year. Made contact with her recently, and she is in great health and recovering. And what we want to do is recognize Los Angeles Airport Police Division, which is the fourth-largest law enforcement agency in Los Angeles County, more than 1,100 law enforcement officers, security staff personnel, Airport Police Division of Los Angeles World Airports, the city department that owns and operates three airports in Southern California, Los Angeles International, L.A.-Ontario, and Van Nuys General Aviation. So we wanted to honor and recognize these two officers for what they did in saving a life and keeping a woman alive through their training, through their professionalism, and with the use of the AED, which is a device that they employed, which is at the airport. Not everyone knows how simple it is to use, but if you're trained, I'm trained, Councilman Rosendahl is trained, I think Councilmember Perry and some of our other colleagues are trained. This is a life-saving device, and it's so appropriate that we recognize and honor these officers today as we're bringing attention to heart and the significance of keeping people alive. So we're going to first turn it over to my colleague, and then we will hear from some of the other representatives, including our fire chief, who's here to pay his respect for what these officers did. Councilmember Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, colleague. Brian Cummings, come up a little bit more so you can at least be seen in the picture photo. It is a combination of efforts that saves lives, and the police department and the fire department have been hand in glove on many issues, and this is gratifying for us because that's what it's all about. These two gentlemen, come on over.
Robert.
Okay. Okay. They say it all, folks. When you think about it, their quick actions saved a life. And to tie it right to the heart, the thing that Ms. Perry did, is clearly a significant coincidence that we're doing one after the other. As Dennis said, I was trained on it. I'm a little nervous about what I would actually do in a situation. I keep one of those red boxes in my car, and, you know, I need to be refreshed and retrained on that because it, but it does save lives. We have them in the building. If you walk around, you'll see them, you know, in different locations. So we want to thank the two of you. God bless you for what you're doing. You're saving lives, you're doing the job. We love you for doing that. Thank you.
Ms. Perry?
Come on, Ms. Perry.
Lady in red.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein. And I'm very proud of these officers here today and all the support that they have. And it's just, I'm sure it must be an incredible, incredible feeling to know that you made the difference. And it is a good follow-up to my presentation because it kind of highlights the need for prevention and more work on taking better care of ourselves. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Zein, and we're going to work on a project together. And this is serious.
You're not going to ask me to get married right now?
No, I'm not going to ask him to get married, even though it's Valentine's Day. But I think that you and I should work together to bring back the Weight Watchers chapter here in City Hall.
There we go.
Okay, so everybody can lose weight and, well, I'm sure we'll have great membership. We can do it on Thursdays, non-council days, so we can go in there too and take better care of ourselves.
What are you smiling for, Joe?
All right, he's still in good shape. Okay. So we're going to work on this together, right? You have a deal?
We have a good deal.
Okay, good deal. Thank you to these officers again. Let's thank them.
Fire chief.
And you can join us too. And that's for men and for women, all right? That's why I want you to be my co-chair on this.
I'll be your co-chair.
All right, thank you.
Chief, fire chief.
Phenomenal effort by these two officers. Public safety in the city of Los Angeles is premier in probably the entire country. And when we can have our police officers, our firefighters that are out there responding to these calls and adding to that chain of survivability. And these automatic defibrillators, they're that first critical link, that public access defibrillator program that this council funded, that the fire department runs. I've got one person, Valerie Munoz, who's phenomenal, that's doing this single-handedly. But in city buildings, at the airport, at our golf, our golf courses, the ability to have that witnessed full arrest and then have someone apply an AED is a critical first link in survival. And these officers being there and taking, making that effort to, that someone's alive today that wouldn't be if they hadn't used this device. So that's phenomenal, what you folks have done. This is something that few people get to do in their lives, to extend someone else's lives. So this certificate is just a small thing, but thank you, gentlemen, for what you do every day, for this in particular. Thank you, council, for the AED program. It's a great program. We want to expand it more, resource it more, so that we can save more lives here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Zein. I just want to say something briefly before the chief of airport police speaks. First of all, thank you for the welcome back. My time here as deputy mayor was incredible, and I was honored enough to go back and serve the president in Washington, D.C. But the one thing I realized when in Washington, D.C. is you're so far removed from the actual life-saving and the work that's done on the ground. And coming back as the new director of Homeland Security and Law Enforcement to see the tremendous work that happened almost after, right after I came back, was truly inspiring. It's one of the reasons why I'm so glad to be back with the best city, with the best law enforcement, firefighters in the country. I just want to make one point, although their efforts on that day cannot be overstated. I think it should be also noted that the airport and the airport police has one of the highest save rates on the automatic defibrillator because of the airport's dedication in conjunction with the fire department to those devices. In fact, I believe the fire department, right before I started, provided an award to LAWA because of their use of it. And it's tremendous, given the 60 million passengers who come through the airport annually, how important those devices are. So I want to thank the council for recognizing their heroic efforts. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to L.A. Chief?
Good morning. On behalf of the airport police, I'd like to thank Councilmembers Zein and members of the council for recognizing Officer Tran and Masquera. It's truly my privilege to work with these officers and the men and women of the Los Angeles Airport Police Department. With over 60 million passengers a year traveling through LAX, our officers face a challenging task providing not only a traveler's safe environment, but a high level of customer service. When Mrs. Martinez suffered her massive heart attack in front of these two officers, their quick actions exemplify the importance of both of these functions. There is no greater service than saving the life of another. We are all very thankful they were present and prepared to perform this critical task, but most critically, that the tools to do so were made available to them. And the AED is a tremendous tool, and we're very thankful that we have the access to those tools. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. And again, this is the AED. This simple device is what saves a life, and training is performed by the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Many of us have been trained. We carry these in our vehicles. But this simple device saves a life when someone is suffering a heart attack. And now we're going to hear from the officers. Tran?
Who first? Go ahead. One at a time. One at a time. I'll be the first one. Counsel, I'd like to just thank, thank you for this opportunity to be recognized by my colleagues at the Los Angeles World Airport and Councilman Zein. I'm lost for words as far as the incident. I was given the opportunity to save someone's life. I took action. Training kicked in. That's all I can say. Thank you again for this recognition.
I would like to thank the city council, Officer Council Zein, for this opportunity. I also thank the department for the opportunity that put me in the training that I need in order for me to do what I did on that day. Thank you.
Mr. Zein.
You've got two former military personnel in law enforcement saving lives.
Mr. Zein.
What better can we have from our public safety personnel?
Mr. Zein, Mr. Labange would like to have some remarks. Mr. Labange, who is correctly sitting in his chair.
Should I go just a shout-out for Tommy Scott, your brother officer?
Just a shout-out for Tommy Scott, your brother officer, who's in heaven. He gave his life to the city in his service. I also wanted to shout-out to June Andrade, L.A. Fire Department administrative staff that was the person who really pushed this through, chief. As you recall, June Andrade since retired, but she was a great believer in it. And then to see all you there and to think of all the people that you welcome and keep safe coming to Los Angeles, I'm proud of the Los Angeles Airport Police. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Zine, Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. And I can't emphasize enough how much we appreciate what these representatives did. And every single day, they're there serving the public. Sometimes they wonder if anyone cares. Well, hopefully, this will show that all of us in public service here, elective office care, and all the 4 million people in Los Angeles and all those that travel through Los Angeles International Airport know that there is a department there that is protect and to serve our traveling public in this region of Los Angeles. So, Mr. President, thank you again. Let's hear it for these fine officers, for the L.A. Airport Police.
Congratulations, guys. So that ends our presentations. Madam Clerk, what I suggest we do at this moment is that we take up Item 6. We have a commissioner's appointment, and then we'll go back to public comment.
Item 6 is the appointment of Ms. Jamie Lee to the Industrial Development Authority.
Okay, before we speak with Ms. Lee, Mr. Garcetti, why don't you give us the introduction here?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And on behalf of the current president and the past president, we're very proud to have before us this nomination that Mr. Wesson is making to have Ms. Lee become a commissioner on our Industrial Development Authority. She has served on a Quality and Productivity Commission, somebody who's distinguished herself not only in her civic service but in her business service here in the fashion industry, in Peromart, looking at ways that we can continue to make Los Angeles a creative center of our world and making sure that we have a strategic plan moving forward. I thought the Industrial Development Authority and Mr. Wesson concurred and would be a perfect place for her to be able to continue to use the tools that we have, especially post-redevelopment, to make sure that we have strong manufacturing base, industrial base here in Los Angeles. And it's also an authority that has increasingly been used by schools to increase some of the school competition we have. Charter schools and others are able to use this bonding authority of the city in order to get lower interest bonds for construction projects, whether that's for a factory or for a school. Both very positive things. So I want to thank Jamie for her willingness to continue to serve. I want to thank Mr. Wesson for his appointment in making this possible. And Ms. Lee, if you want to just describe to folks your interest in serving on the authority?
Sorry?
If you just want to say your interest in serving on the authority and the skills that you bring to the position.
Sure. Thank you so much for the introduction. Thank you, Mr. President, for your nomination. Thank you, council, for having me today. It's an honor to be here. As Mr. Garcetti stated, I've been on the Quality and Productivity Commission. I also serve as chair of the Fashion District, Business Improvement District. I'm now starting my second term, and I'm very interested in this position because industrial development is so important in our city, particularly in the Fashion District, where we not only have the creative tools, the top schools in fashion and design to bring new merchandise forward, but also the ability to, on our own schedule, produce that within the city on our own timetable.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you, and I ask for your full support, colleagues, on this appointment. And thank you again, Mr. Wesson, for the nomination.
Mr. Labange.
I just want to thank you. Your family has been very instrumental in the revitalization of the heart of the commercial district in the Wilshire Center, Riptown area. And I don't think it's fitting that you serve this city on this board to have the great view of the whole city as well. Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let us open the... Oh, no, I have two public comment cards on this. Mr. Arnold Sacks and I believe it's no name. Mr. Dowd.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Congratulations on your appointment. Regarding industrial development in the city of L.A. and maybe the fact that it's so slow to have changes in the business appeal process to get a business license in the city, do you ever cross over and to ask what you can do to see what can be created? We know that Austin Butner had a secret plan to get, what is it, a Chinese company? A company to come in to bypass some of the rules and regulations that were necessary or the process to get their license to operate a company in the city of L.A.? And the Green Tech Corridor that has now gone down the tube because of redevelopment funding. Are you concerned about that? And what do you think should happen? Because there's no more redevelopment fund supposedly, except for the $600 million that are budgeted for next year, approximately $185 million for past due bonds. But redevelopment projects for the Industrial Development Authority, do they cross over into that? And the economic zones, I mean, the city council just approved an economic... Oh, no, that was the county board. But state legislation did a study and said the economic zones in the city cost the state almost $3 billion in revenue. So when you talk about industrial development, how does that play into industrial development zones? And the Fashion Institute, did you happen to by any chance read the New York Times article regarding how the state of California or the country lost Apple computers? They did a study, and they showed that the 10 or 15 top manufacturers from 1970 have changed from manufacturing to service-oriented businesses in 2010. What's your stand on that?
Thank you, yes, Matt Dowd. Welcome to all the young people we've got in here today watching how the city council works. If you stick around long enough, you will see it in action, big time. But for now, we're just talking about an appointment to the Industrial Development Authority. And I tend to agree, in the city of Los Angeles, I'm not sure how much room there is for industrial development. Because we've spent the last five or 10 years putting in residential development everywhere you look. And so we're packing people in here, and we've got the port of L.A., where the whole country, everybody's goods that go to all the Walmarts and all the Apple stores and all the things that you buy come in on this port in containers, and they ship them right through the city. So there's already a bunch of problems with smog and pollution and congestion. And then we spend all this time jamming people in here. There's not enough infrastructure because all the pipes and all the conduits and all the things under the streets, they're all built in the '20s and the '30s and '40s and '50s when there was nowhere near the number of people they're jamming in here now. So there's all those problems. So I'm against any more, any industrial development in the city. It's time to put up the gates, say enough is enough. We've got children here at school. They need a healthy environment to breathe. I told you, get federal money and build an underground rail line to ship all the containers out of here and get all the trucks off the street. We don't want any more industrial development. We're all going to die of cancer. I mean, if you want to be real, that's the real truth in America.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd and Mr. Sacks. Now, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, I understand that we now have 13 members, so why don't we do the... Take the vote on, I think we have two ordinances?
Yes, Items 1 and 4.
Okay, so if we could proceed with those items. Item 1 first?
Mr. President, first vote.
Do we have to reconsider it? Okay, let's have a vote on reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, now on Item 1. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All righty, then. That brings us to Item 4. So the first vote is on reconsideration, or did we... Do we do a separate vote for reconsideration on this? Okay. Then on reconsideration, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
If I could call Cheryl Eickley...
You have to vote on this.
Before you start, Cheryl, I have to call for the vote. So on Item 4, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right, now, if I could get Cheryl Eickley, Arnold Sacks, and Dr. Williams.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Eickley. I'm a member of...
Cheryl, hold your time. I want to see the people that are going to speak after you. So, Mr. Williams, if you could come, Dr. Williams, and Mr. Sacks. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Eickley, and I'm a member of Occupy Los Angeles, and I speak for myself today. I want to share some information with you about the State Attorney General's settlement deal that was announced yesterday. A lot of you might not know this, but $650 billion have been the cost of foreclosures in the state of California and lost home values, property taxes, and other related foreclosure costs for the local governments, just like this body here. The AG settlement was for $18 billion. That's less than 3 cents on the dollar. 1.2 million homes have been closed in California foreclosed since 2008. That equals $150 per foreclosure. 175,000 people nationwide may get up to $2,000 for their homes that were wrongfully foreclosed on. If I stole your home, would $2,000 be enough? The AG also said that there was $3.9 billion for L.A. County. There are 80,000 homeowners underwater in the city of Los Angeles alone, and that is $7.3 billion. That doesn't include the $1.2 billion that it costs the city of Los Angeles for the foreclosure-related items for each foreclosure, which totals up to $8.5 billion in the city of Los Angeles alone. The amount allocated through this settlement is $457 billion short of the damage done in this city alone. And it's not like California is getting $18 billion in cold, hard cash. The banks are only paying collectively, the five of them, $5 billion. The rest are in so-called bank programs and benefits, for example, paying off the unpaid debt owed to the banks. Thank you.
Mr. Sacks, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. I appreciate the conversation we had yesterday, Councilman Wesson. And you're aside about my wardrobe. So I talked to my friend in the city attorney's office. I talked to Maggot, and I said, "Maggot, the city council's upset with my wardrobe. I'm trying to support my school spirit, the university, and they're upset with it." And he said, "You know what? It's okay for Councilman Reyes to sit on the Gold Line Construction Authority two years before it was even authorized..." No, four years before it was even authorized, and it's okay for Metro to collect, oh, I don't know, anywhere from $100 million... Oh, excuse me, $70 million to $100 million a year in extra funds because they have people that sit on unauthorized committees, then it's certainly okay for you to wear that t-shirt." And I got that from my friend at the city attorney's office, Maggot. So if it works for Mr. Reyes, and I'm sure you spoke to the city attorney and asked him and said, "How could that be, Mr. City Attorney? How can we have committee members? How can we have elected officials sit on committees that the state doesn't authorize, as like the Gold Line Construction Authority, four years before they're authorized? How does that happen? How do you collect funding? You talk about heart care. You think people who are struggling to collect an extra $15 a month, which comes to about $160 a year, could use that money or more, actually? Do you think they could use that for their health care?"
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council Board Member and resident, 30 years? 25 years in El Cerrano. We've been looking at 710 for a long time. We had some gratification when three members of the Bureau of Engineering were nominated, appointed as members of the Technical Advisory Committee for the SR 710 North Extension Environmental Impact Statement and Report. However, we held a meeting this last week, the Technical Advisory Committee, and three members of the Bureau of Engineering failed to show up. How does this represent the city of Los Angeles to Caltrans and MTA? Poorly. What's going on? They were appointed and names were given, but nobody shows up. This happened before, and we're quite concerned about how El Cerrano will be represented on the Technical Advisory Committee. We'll do it if you don't. So I would hope that the city council could instruct the Board of Public Works to please have the Bureau of Engineering staff that have been appointed to the Technical Advisory Committee attend the bloody thing. We're getting somewhat upset. I've only been on it for 30 years. Some people have been on it for 40 years. And right now, both SCAGs and the Technical Advisory Committee are considering a surface route with an interchange at Huntington Drive as one of the preferred alternatives. It was their first alternative to be reviewed. It's on paper. It's in their reports. So we're quite concerned about how El Cerrano is going to fare, given the city council's resolution against any surface route. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. And I do have three remaining public comment cards, but we're going to move to Item 5 so that we can accommodate Ms. Perry. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also want to recognize the Manual Arts High School students here from the Academy of Finance with their teacher, Scott Endrick. Let's give them a hand. And thank you for listening to us today. Thank you on Item 5. I wanted to thank SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, for, once again, taking the lead in addressing our region's transportation needs. This is not an easy task. I would also like to thank our Department of Transportation, in particular, Miles Mitchell, who's done an excellent job at outreach to not only my office but coordinating the city response. The Department of Transportation provided good comments, and I hope that we'll approve this report today. I want to highlight one activity, that is, a project in the Slauson Corridor from Alameda to Crenshaw, and use my time to urge the regional council of SCAG to consider this corridor for funding and further study. Slauson Avenue has long been a historic east-west corridor for the region, incorporating both highway and rail freight operations. It is a heavily-used corridor that is in need of improvements to make it more transportation-friendly for pedestrians, for bikes, for cars, and for public transportation. The ownership of Slauson is very complicated. The city owns the present substandard street right-of-way. Metro or MTA owns the freight railroad right-of-way. Burlington Northern Santa Fe holds the operating rights to the rail line, and all changes to the corridor would require approval by the California Public Utilities Commission. All of this being said, it's very clear that this would be an ideal transportation project for SCAG to fund. SCAG has the capacity to bring other intergovernmental entities to the table to make up a to make up a plan for Slauson Avenue that takes into consideration the movement of all the options that I've just listed. So I hope SCAG hears me today, and I appreciate the forum to call attention to this proposed project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning. Come on up, I want to ask you a question on the record here. We had a very robust hearing on this in transportation the other day, and I appreciated the thoroughness of what you've done. Just give a quick recap for the viewers out there and for my colleagues, and I got a series of questions. Let me give you the questions, but I also want the rehab. At our joint meeting back in October, I asked if we could have a breakdown of how many transportation projects we've submitted to SCAG are focused on transit, pedestrian bicycle versus automobile or goods movement. Do we have that breakdown? If not, we need to get it. Obviously, when we were in the room there, we had a lot of cyclists there who really want to make sure that they're always engaged in this process, and of course, I welcome that. The overall percentage of SCAG RTP funds dedicated to active transportation is about 1.3%. I've heard it's suggested that 5% to 8% range more accurately reflects the mode split. Has either Planning or DOT commented on this to SCAG? If not, is there still time to do it? Let's answer that one if we could right now.
Yes, Councilmember...
Your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Miles Mitchell with the Department of Transportation. Good morning. Councilmember, as we discussed two days ago in Transportation Committee, the Los Angeles Department of Transportation's primary comments on this document is with regard to the project list. We have prepared and attached... An attachment, attachment E, to our report, which identifies approximately 90 street improvement, our highway projects. And one of them includes the Slauson Project, which Councilmember Perry just mentioned. In addition, in the text of our report, we discuss the importance of ensuring that the Los Angeles Bicycle Plan and also Mobility Hubs, which is a first-mile-last-mile strategy, be funded in the constrained plan, which is one of three parts of the project list in the RTP. The constrained plan is that list of projects in which there is reasonably available funding pending further review. We, in addition, have asked that, to the extent that those projects are not identified or funded in the constrained plan, that they be added to the strategic plan.
Right.
And I should just mention here that the Los Angeles Bicycle Plan, as many of you know, includes approximately 1,500 projects and at a total cost of about $472 million. So we believe that the projects that we have requested to be added to the constrained and/or strategic plan, that this is a multimodal list of projects. And so, that's one comment I could make to your question.
Give me some comfort for cyclists.
Well, the Los Angeles Bicycle Plan is a momentous step forward with regard to bicycling, and it's an historic moment in the city. And we're very proud of it. And the Department of Transportation, City Planning worked very hard on this as well. And can... Perhaps you would like to add to that, Mr. Bernstein?
Sure. Ken Bernstein with Department of City Planning. I would just add that the Department of City Planning has submitted a comment letter that is included with the city's overall comments. And one of our key points in the letter was to ensure that the facilities included in the 2010 Bicycle Plan be specifically referenced. There were exhibits in the RTP that had not specifically referenced the full extent of our Bicycle Plan facilities, and we have made certain that that is a high priority within the RTP.
Okay, that's very important, and I'm glad you said it on the record. Mr. President, I don't know if any other colleagues want to speak, but I'd like to move this forward.
Very good, Mr. Chair. Of that, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you for all your work. But Mr. Weezer wants to comment as well as Mr. Reyes. Thank you. And Mr. Rosendahl, we approach the bench, please. Please.
Approve the bench. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, and I want to thank the staff. This is the third time I see this item. Once in Plum, once in transportation, and here we are. But thank you for your work on this. We added the streetcar on the list of projects that the city would like to put on the list. That is a transportation system that Metro is currently doing the environmental and hopefully provide better transportation for the downtown region when that opens. Secondly, I made my point in Plum about our community plans, and since we are relying our community plans to predict and forecast future activity through this report, and our community plans are not updated as they should, the information might be skewed, but we know the solution to that. The solution to that is to fund a planning department to get our community plans up to date. And we need to do that, I think. We often don't recognize that how important these community plans are, not only for that particular community that needs to create a vision for its future, but when we rely on these community plans for other planning, for future planning, transportation and housing, et cetera, it impacts the whole city. And I think we've gone long enough with not getting to where we need to be with the community plans. I know our Chair of Plum has been advocating for this for some time, but hopefully through our Budget and Finance Committee with Mr. Krikorian there, if he's listening to me right now, we will put more attention on our community plans that need to be updated. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, this occurs every four years. The Southern California Association of Government, SCAG, has to, by law, make and deliver a report that falls in all the cities within this region. The report itself has to be consistent with certain directives set by state law. What we see before us is a body of work in which our planning department and transportation department analyzed the different assertions and policies and came forth with a report which essentially either confirmed or challenged some of their conclusions. For the most part, both departments acknowledge that SCAG's statement, that the SES, which is the Sustainable Community Strategy, essentially does not supersede local land use policies. That being said, now we have a pyramid of sorts of issues and policies where you have projects that need to be identified for future funding. Much of what we have presented does support the sustainable concept of how we can grow as a city. And as we know, land use and transportation are attached at the hip. Although sometimes we tend to differ on the approach and how we work some of these issues, I think we all come from the same place that we want to see an environment that is going to be in a place where we can compete as a region economically and to be able to enhance our quality of life. In the near future, colleagues will be talking about how as a region we perform in implementing these tools, looking at these policies. But more importantly, how do we start establishing this notion of space in such a way where these policies can work together? So, looking at transit oriented districts, looking at the movement of goods and services, especially in light of what is happening in the Panama Canal, in which we are now in a place where we don't move forward, we will be missing a tremendous opportunity as well as jeopardizing thousands of jobs if we are not ready to compete with the Panama Canal. So how these policies reinforce those types of challenges is critical. So not only relieving circulation and congestion in certain pockets, but also how we make it much more desirable for investors to come in and work in the market of Southern California and indeed, Los Angeles. So this is what we have at stake. I'm thankful for our departments. Colleagues, I've been involved with SCAG much more intensely these past year or so. I've been sitting on the Committee of Economic Development and Housing, and I'm watching decisions being made that I want to thank my colleagues that do attend. But our vote is important. This is the one body in SCAG that has 15 votes. And I think we have, at the most, been there maybe six, seven votes. We have been very fortunate. But imagine if one day we all showed up and started making our presence felt in the Southern California region. I think we would be influencing other decision-makers and how they treat Los Angeles and how we put ourselves in an advantageous position to compete in the market. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl, we have a public comment has been placed in your committee.
That's correct.
But I talked to the city attorney. We're going to have one-minute public comment right now. Dr. Clyde Williams, Arnold Sacks. Right, start it up right now. Come on in, doctor.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Tom... Ready to go? Okay. Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council. The SCAG's RTP DEIR is due in... Comments on it are due in four days. The comments from the city do not reflect one major element for El Cerrano. SCAG already has a route, capacity, traffic loads, and costs detailed down to seven significant digits of what is going to be for 710 North Extension from the 10 to the 210. This has been countered several times. It appears to follow the same route as the surface route. So we're quite concerned that this gag, RTP DEIR, is going to face some inquisition, perhaps, of adequacy, completeness, and appropriateness.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Arnold Sacks, Dr. Sacks from Lenox, California.
Thank you, and thank you for your magnanimous offer here. One minute. Let me quickly read here. On October 22, the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority unanimously adopted the 2009 Long Range Transportation Plan. Because based on what Councilman Reyes said, every four years you'd do this plan. This being 2012, the last plan you would have done would have been 2008. But the MTA adopted a 2009 Long Range Transportation Plan. By the way, do you know what the 2008 Long Range Transportation Plan was? That was a draft that wasn't adopted. Yet SCAG made adjustments to that 2008 Transportation Plan, which wasn't adopted. So the amount of money being spent is magnanimous, is the amount of time that we get. But what do we get for the results? And by the way, according to Mr. Reyes, I've actually been to more SCAG meetings than anybody in the council. It's amazing.
Thank you. Ry Berry, please. Ry Berry.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for all the hard work that Los Angeles has already been doing on active transportation. We have three specific things that we're looking for the city to support with regard to SCAG. One, increase the overall funding. 1% of the funding in RTP is for active transportation, but we've got 21% of the mode share and 25% of the accidents. We also heard about heart disease this morning. We've got a 24% obesity rate. The second thing is to move the funding forward. 80% of the funding in the plan is not dedicated until after 2026. That means we're going to have to wait 15 years. That's a whole generation we're going to have to wait for that funding to be helping our kids get to school. Lastly, we would like to see SCAG really provide some leadership on technical assistance, and we would like to see them come up with a strategic funding plan for active transportation for the whole region so that when we come back in 2016, we know where we're going, we know where we're going to get the extra money. Thank you. My name is Ry Berg with Safe Ross School National Partnership.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl, do you have another comment?
I've heard of Mr....
Mr. Reyes, please. Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to make sure that, based on comments made, that we understand what's in front of us. And the RTP proposes expenditures of $524.7 billion. And SCAG also states that new revenue sources the RTP faces a funding shortfall of $219 billion. And to make up that difference, it's been asserted that we review an increase in the state-federal gas tax, replacement of the gas tax with a mileage user fee, and that's an assumption that's being made, the implementation of a vehicle miles travel fee, or an increase in the gas tax having included the RTP as a significant part of the funding strategy. There's also this notion of the implementation of cordon or congestion pricing around key activity centers, which has been moved to the strategic plan of the RTP. Can you just elaborate on what that means? The cordon? This whole congestion pricing around certain areas in the city? Understanding that needs more study. But can you just lay out what that impact means to our districts?
Well, the Councilmember Reyes, the...
Move the microphone closer to you.
Yes, the cordon pricing strategy has been discussed for some time at SCAG. SCAG, back in the spring and summer of last year, was proposing demonstration projects for cordon pricing similar to the London model, whereby cars entering, crossing the cordon would pay a fee to enter into the city of London. And that is an operation presently. They were proposing something similar for the LAX area and for downtown. We indicated in our report on September 21 of 2011, the city staff report that we... And which was adopted by council, that cordon pricing, although it certainly has merit as a strategy, does require further city review, may have impacts that could be substantial and we need to look at. And as a result, the RTP, as presently written, includes cordon pricing in the strategic plan for further review and pending further funding. So that's the current status of cordon pricing. It would impact, as proposed in past discussions at SCAG, it would impact the LAX area and the downtown area if implemented as SCAG would like it to be.
So, again, we might hear from our constituents that we supported the RTP. In it, there's this concept that we would charge people to come into certain neighborhoods, that in downtown, we would charge to actually come into downtown LA or into areas around LAX that does generate revenue. It already happens in the city of London. So I want to make very clear, colleagues, that it's a strategy, it's a concept, it's out there. The fact that we support the study doesn't mean we're going to implement it, but it is in front of us, and it is out there. And that's why it's important for us to be part of that discussion at SCAG, because they could make decisions that affect our funding if they support strategies like that, and we're not at the table. So I just want to put that out there because that's the level of discussion that's occurring right now.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, and your leadership with SCAG. You've been a major player in that, and also with the League of Cities, I might add, in dealing with issues that impact our great city. I'm happy that he outlined what he just did, and we need people to understand what we're doing. At this point, colleagues, I move that the Transportation Committee report be approved and moved forward.
Alright, so moved by Mr. Rosendahl, the fine Councilor of the 15th. Mr. Joe Moscato seconds it. There's no other speakers on the queue. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Fourth with on that matter. Thank you very much. Next item. Thank you, and thank all the fine staff at SCAG over there, especially Hossan.
Item three, call special for Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer. One moment, please. Mr. Weezer first, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we could continue this item at the request of building safety that needs to work some items out with this property owner for 30 days, please.
30-day continuance, no objection. So ordered.
That item will be continued to March 13th.
March 13th. Madam Clerk and members, we're gonna go back to public comment, and thank you, Mr. Weezer, for the quick resolution of that matter. Mr. Ben Fortson, please come to the microphone. Eleanor Harrison, please come to the microphone, followed by Matt Dowd. Thank you.
Happy Black History Month. On November 18th, 2011, Oscar Hernandez shot at the White House in an attempt to assassinate President Obama and his family. On December 21st, 2011, Jules Manson, a Republican Tea Party wannabe politician, called President Obama the N-word and suggested that someone assassinate the F E C K I N N I G G E R and his monkey children. I don't curse. In early January 2012, two smoke bombs were thrown over the White House fence. Dozens of other racist individuals have verbally harassed and dishonored the president, motivated by hate. What these bloodthirsty racist individuals have in common is the fact that they believe their acts are customary, patriotic, and fundamentally the all-American way. It has been declared by the U.S. judicial system that Charles Jules Manson and many others, except for Oscar Hernandez, the shooter, that in fact have been found not guilty of any crime, and that these sociopath individuals were simply being patriotic. The attacks against President Obama has been personal, ugly, racist, and he has never really been accepted as a legitimate president by many. Comparing black people to apes in the United States has always been a racist way of harassment, insult, and a way to ridicule black people for centuries. This confirms that racism is alive, customary, patriotic, accepted, permitted, and simply the American way of dealing with black people. This sends a covert and overt message that it's okay to target and victimize black people, and very few speak out about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. For the record, if you would state your name, sir.
Excuse me?
For the record, would you state your name?
Leon. I'm here to point out some very crucial facts about black history. In the history of the United States, the U.S. has always proclaimed to be an establishment based on Christian principle morals and values. It's crystal clear that the Emancipation Act of freeing African-American black captives was merely granted for politically correct reasons and not for the sake of righteousness. Because if the Emancipation Act of freeing African-American black captives was motivated for the sake of justice, atonement would have been rendered and reconciliation would have been established. I would like to reflect on Dr. Martin Luther King. The sad fact remains that until reconciliation is established by atonement being rendered for the slave trade genocide that the U.S. government has committed against African-American black people, the truth is that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. sacrificed, laid down his life, and died in vain. Black people have sown and sacrificed much for America, while on the other hand have reaped very little. America has reconciled and rendered atonement to the Native American Indians and also to Japanese. It's time for America to reconcile and render atonement to African-American black people. Let's adopt Reconciliation Act. Black people are treated like illegitimate steps citizens. Black people in America have been treated and taken, have been taken for fools. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
All right, thank you, yeah, Matt Dowd. I'm here on, I gotta file some more things in federal court across the road. There's another one. Trying to figure out where we stand with the First Amendment in America, because apparently Maggot is in, but Pussy is out. Two creatures with, no, this is my time. This is my time. Don't even interrupt. Don't even think about interrupting. That's how you got in trouble with Jan Perry, the only one who does understand the First Amendment here. Now, if you all think you're smarter than the 500 attorneys over there that I beat, see, I'm Matt Dowd. I'm with Zuma Dogg, David Salzberg on a federal case. We got a preliminary injunction against the city of Los Angeles from a federal judge, and we didn't have an attorney. And now your 500 attorneys have handed the case over to some other attorneys over here, Myers, Nave, Reback, Silver, and Wilson, for $100,000. So that's who we're up against now, and they're trying to, you know, there are these big attorneys up in this office trying to browbeat these innocent artists, painters, and people I brought in that were being violated. And Bill Rosenthal's over here. See, Paul Krikorian, he's got a problem with that shirt that Arnold Sachs was wearing, had to get up and make a big fuss. But I come here and I do a hideous, a hideous Nazi salute, right? And nobody says anything, and that's way more hideous. So who are you to be the boss of what's politically allowable and correct in America, Paul Krikorian? You're smarter than all the attorneys, but you already screwed up.
Please address the chair. The speaker, please address the chair.
All right, Tom Labonge, thank you. Yes, Paul Krikorian, he screwed up. I'm talking about him, I'm telling you all about him. His performance...
Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend. No other public comment at this time. That closes public comment. And Madam Clerk, we have a couple special items, correct?
Yes, Mr. President. Do you wish to recess the regular meeting and begin the special meeting?
Well, Mr. Zion, you have a question?
Before we do that, I'd like to have item 12 go forthwith, please.
12 forthwith, very well.
Thank you.
It's in the special meeting yet, mister.
Pardon me?
That's in the special meeting. We're not there yet.
That's it, we gotta vote on it first.
I thought we already did it.
All right, very good.
Well, okay, then I'll be patient. I wanna be controlled.
All right, now, let's go, right now, into the special items, correct? Special meeting?
Yes. Alarco and Buscana, Cardes, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Caress, Krikorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Zion, Weston, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. What's our first item?
Items 11 and 12 are items for which a public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, let's open the roll on that.
Cards on both items, Mr. President.
Right, but 11? I got cards here. We're gonna have public comment.
Request to continue item 11 to February 17th.
Okay, we'll note that, and we note the public comment cards. Item 11 will be continued. Next item. Mr. Arnold Sachs for cards. Matt Dowd for cards.
Yes, thank you. It's kind of ironic that you're having a public notice period hearing to establish 10 days, when you don't even pay attention to what's on the agenda. It's absolutely amazing. Why bother? No, they need to go through the agenda and get to the item on the agenda before you can vote on it. Pay attention. You don't pay attention to us, no big deal, but you make fools of yourself when you don't pay attention to what we try to pay attention to. So this 10-day establishment for the public hearing, why change it in the first place? Why not allow 24 days? You had people come in yesterday, or, excuse me, on Wednesday, and mentioned that they had no notice of the hearing regarding the rate increase, or, in other words, the elimination of the ceiling cap for future rate increases, which is even more important than a rate increase. But it was mailed out. So why, people still came in and said they didn't have notice on that hearing. So why change it? What's the 24 days? Why bother? Why not just go with 24 days? Why not give the public, hey, you could have 24 days, and you could give them 30 seconds to speak on their objections, or even a minute. Be magnanimous, like the chair is today. Why change it? Why not? If it's been a project that's been in the planning commission since 2011, who knows how long before that, why not allow the public the extra 12 days? Who's getting hurt? Oh, that would be the public.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, Matt Dowd, nice to be in the special meeting, Channel 35. Let me talk about this one. Maybe I can answer some of those questions from the previous speaker. See, here, there's always a reason, there's always a reason that these things don't come through, or let's, you know, let's, you know, this is the notice for the public hearing, and here's why they have to do it, because there's some other deadline they missed. There's some kind of funding, there's some other thing, and all of a sudden, oh, and they think it's in the public's interest. See, it says finding of necessity and public benefit to take 14 days off of the public notice period. Now, that's a contradiction in terms unless, of course, the city council thinks it's in the public's benefit to just steamroll ahead with the project and forget about the public, because we need to get this thing through, and in the end, it will be better for you. So we'll just take control of things that we probably shouldn't, and I don't know if the attorneys have got, they must have looked in some way to weasel out of this. So let's just go ahead and then put up this new village, Westfield Topanga, sounds like there could be some campaign contributions, reelections are in the future, and we gotta get this through, because if it doesn't, I think that something's gonna, they're gonna lose, they're gonna lose the whole thing, because that's what's happening up in Dennis Zion's district. Taking it all away, Dennis, just go for the residential. And they're just, there's too many of these Westfields, anyway. You know, I used to be a big photographer for the Westfield chain in Australia. So they are a nice retail chain. No, I was a big-time sports photographer, Greg Norman, Tiger Woods. It's part of my photography case against the city. So it's all intertwined with Matt Dowd, Channel 35. Thank you, Tom Labonge.
Okay, that completes comment on the public, and there's no speakers on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, so ordered.
I believe those requests for forthwith, Mr. President.
Fourthwith, thank you very much. And then we're gonna do, there's a special one, is that correct?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Do you wish to adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting?
Yes, I do. So let's go back in the regular session. We have a special one. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the geotechnical survey was completed on the collapsed Mount Lee Fire Road. Immediate action is required to declare the repair project an urgent necessity and to identify funding in order to immediately repair the road. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you very much. That's for the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes. Okay, the matter's before us. It's requested by the city engineer and consulted with the mayor's office, Parks Department, General Service and I T A. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you very much. Fourthwith. Thank you. Now, the only item left is item number 10, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's call, item 10 has cards. Mr. Sachs and Mr. Dowd. Mr. Dowd, since you're there, you go first. Is item number 10. Thank you.
All right, yes, it pays to sit up the front sometimes. Okay, this is relative. See, here's another one where, you know, you gotta go into closed session to settle some litigation. Request for outside counsel. Oh my goodness, what are you doing with all these attorneys across the street? I could do a line item deletion of some of those people over there. Just give me the list. Claudia Martin, top of the list, because I beat her in a criminal appeal, and she's meant to be an attorney, and I'm not. I've never done any of that. I was just winging it, winging it. Oh my goodness. So here's one. Communities actively living independent and free, of course, they've got problems with the city of L.A. With a name like that, what do you expect? Change it to communities living completely compliant with every ordinance and tax the city of Los Angeles is extracting from us, and you'll never have problems with the city. So this case concerns allegations that the city violates the Americans with Disabilities Act and related laws with regard to its emergency plans. So I'd love to draw attention to it. Just another thing that you gotta get outside counsel for. You know, and I'm not trying to be here like this. I wanna get back to New Zealand. You'll never see me again, but I, you're right. And it all is some lost income and citations and then court appearances and Hannah Montana and going to jail and handcuffs. You know, there's costs and there's damages, and we're documenting them, and they're deeper than you think.
Mr. Sachs.
Just thank you again. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. It's almost amazing that the Americans with Disabilities Act, probably at least 20 years old, maybe older, we just heard you had a committee here, or you had a presentation from SCAG regarding the mobility plan, the 2012 mobility plan. Isn't there some kind of connection between a mobility plan and an emergency plan? You have SCAG involved, you have the Transportation Committee involved, you have the Department of Transit, the city's transportation department, you have the emergency budgets, and yet you have no plan. The plan I see is to develop an opportunity to create billable hours. My attorney, Maggot, in the city attorney's office, states that's a pretty good idea. You create billable hours, you hire outside attorneys, every lawsuit needs to be addressed, every lawsuit needs to be fought. There was a lawsuit that was occurred in the city of Redondo Beach. The city attorney there claimed that the, and the city lost, they have to pay attorney fees $500 an hour, over, excuse me, over $500 an hour. That's not bad money if you can get it. So what are the attorney fees for a lawsuit like this? Do you have a billable hour rate that you go by, or is it just up to the outside attorneys you hire? $550 an hour. Good thing there's infrastructure in place, good thing there's transit in place, good thing there's parks in place, good thing there's low-income housing in place, because $550 an hour, you might be able to spend some money on some of those projects, but you don't need to.
Okay, that completes the public comment. We're gonna go into executive session. Mr. City Attorney, I'm gonna ask the sergeants to clear the chambers of those other than those who are responsible to be here at this time, and those who are in chambers, wish you a nice day. Sergeants, clear the chambers.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
585-IkeF506013. We're looking for a red light.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 p.m. until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we... That's no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as a grill meet.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to you by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating
everyone in our community.
them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
Okay, it's open. We're in open session, we welcome you back. We have a matter that's before us, Madam Clerk. Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. President, enclosed session on item number 10, council acted to instruct the city attorney to refrain from seeking appellate review in this matter.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. City Attorney. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Don't take a vote. So we're okay on that. That completes our activity today.
Excuse me, Mr. President, council has motions for post and a referral.
Post and a referral, so ordered.
And actually-
Mr. City Attorney?
The vote was 11 to nothing with council members Cardenas, Parks, Perry, and Wesson absent.
Thank you very much. Members, are there any announcements?
Excuse me, Mr. President, there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Krikorian requests to leave at 12:30 on February 14th for city business.
So ordered.
Councilmember Alarcon requests to arrive at 11:00 AM on February 17th.
Accept it.
Councilmember Reyes requests to leave at 12:30 on February 22nd.
Accept it.
Councilmember Labanz requests to leave at 11:00 AM on February 22nd.
No, okay, we'll do that, we'll go along with that.
And Councilmember Krikorian requests to leave at 12:00 PM on February 28th for city business.
Accepted.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements? No announcements before, but we hope we have a good weekend. We do have adjourned motions. Sergeants, we ask all to rise in respect for those who went before us for adjourned motions. Adjourned motions at this time. The fine councilman of the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, we rise in honor of Alejandra Medina, passed away on February 9th. Born February 26, 1931, in Leon, Juanahto, Mexico. Alejandra Medina is a grandmother of one of my field deputies, Gabby Medina. Alejandra and her husband, Loretto Medina, had 13 children and a family tree of 88 members. And although she became a widow 28 years ago, Mrs. Medina never remarried. She knew one day that they would reunite. That wish came true yesterday morning. Alejandra was known for, to her children and grandchildren as "Ama," short for "Mom," and also translate to the English word "love." She showed everyone love. She always called her loved ones on their birthday, anniversary, or any special day. She was a loyal wife, a loving mother, a selfless individual. She leaves behind many who will remember a strong woman who never gave up. And on behalf of my family and my staff, my thoughts and prayers go out to Gabby and her family. And may Alejandra rest in peace. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much, all members. On that, any other adjourned motions? Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Patricia Disney. She is the wife, passed away recently, of Roy Disney, Walt's brother. She was much-loved, especially as a mother through her family, and Mr. Krikorian will tell you as well. She did many good things with the great Disney family, has done over the years, including great contributions to St. Joseph's Hospital Medical Center in the North Hollywood Burbank area, to the Patricia Disney Family Cancer Center there, as well as to Disney Concert Hall. She's arrived by her four children, Roy, Susan, Abigail, and Timothy, along with 17 grandchildren. I ask we adjourn in memory of Patricia A. Disney. And also, members, this is part of California history. This is a generation, the last of the generations, three, the great-grandfather, grandfather, father, and the son who passed. Tom Dinger was a railroad engineer. For over 40 years, he was a railroad engineer. First, Southern Pacific, and then working for Amtrak. He was, his dad was an engineer, his dad's dad was an engineer, and three generations, if I could correct it. He grew up in the Silver Lake area, went to John Marshall High School, and we greeted him with a resolution when he pulled the old train in from San Diego about five years ago. Shortly after his retirement, he developed cancer, and he fought cancer very, very, very hard. He was also involved in many community activities. And one of the great things about him, every election day, he was at, and Mr. Garcetti will tell you, at the Silver Lake Rec Center, at the polling place, volunteering in the great democratic process. He also was on the American Cancer Society's Referral Aid for Life, which was held at the Mahalan Fountain, as well as John Marshall High. He survived by his wonderful wife, Pat, and their daughter, Choice, Chloe. So I ask that we adjourn in memory of Tom Dinger, a great American, 68 years young, but a great railroad engineer, as his father was and his grandfather was. A legacy of the three Dingers, all in heaven. That completes our adjourned motions. Members, and all of us, have a good, safe weekend. Thank you all very much.